Call this meeting quarter. Interviews, introductions. My name is Dean Urquhart. I'm on the planning board. This is Danny McElhoun, Jim Cummings.
Are you all on the planning board?
Yes, sir.
The lead proposal's next, right?
Yeah, the application.
Yep, we have the application. Okay, we have an application submitted for use variance on St. Lawrence River. We have a site plan. It's the applicant's name. It is Roger Reifensneider from Dark Island Spirits from Hammond, New York. He is proposing a project in the Zone Marine Development District. The description of the project is a multi-use of the building. It's going to be used as a gas dock, a marine store, a boat repair, all of which it is currently undergoing, I believe, and adding a new microbrewery to the property. I believe that we have all of the information that is required to be submitted. It is going to the Jefferson County Planning Board also. And that's all I got. You want me to read all the other stuff?
Um, open up the...
Open it up to him?
The applicant.
Okay. Roger, are you prepared to address the group?
Well, I'm prepared.
If you can, if you want to. Stand up for it.
That's great. Evening.
Good, Roger.
Good. I'd like to, first of all, correct one thing. It's not a microbrewery that we are attending. It's a micro-distillery. Micro-distillery is kind of a... It's a new little term. Over the last couple of years, New York State has allowed there to be what's called a farm-distillery. A farm-distillery under New York State law is a distillery that's allowed to produce up to 35,000 gallons of distilled alcohol per year. To give you a perspective of that, what we're planning on doing in the Bay, if we can do that in the Bay, is an operation that would allow us to produce somewhere around 2,500 gallons. So, we're talking way smaller than even what, you know, the New York State law would be for micro-distillery. An example of that would be Clayton Distillers' new operation out on Route 12 in Clayton. That's a farm-distillery. And that might be large. You know, that might actually be where, you know, they're trying to really produce some product, get bus tours in, things like that. But, so right off the bat, I want to tell you that micro-distillery, it's kind of a... It's almost like a new word. You know, it's like taking something that's now allowed by law and then scaling it down further. For example, one of the reasons we want to scale it down further, which we talked about, is there are stills out there that are made that are electric. They're plug-and-play, 250 volts. So, we're not talking about a boiler-operated, big industrial thing. We're talking about a small facility, a small unit that plugs in, and they're used in urban environments all over the world now. And in fact, what I have here on my iPad is a bunch of pictures of equipment that I pass around. And to give you an idea, on the very first picture, this is a still operation. This is actually a factory where they made... This is a 60-gallon... For perspective, this is 60 gallons. I mean, it's not much bigger than a 55-gallon truck. We're thinking of twice that size for 120 gallons. So, if anybody wants to look at it, you just flip through here and give you the pictures of what equipment is available.
Question. Danny, what's the purpose of manufacturing the still?
Of what are we going to do here?
Yeah.
Well, we're doing it as a business. I mean, our...
What's the purpose of payments?
Hold on. Yeah, sure. We'll get to your questions.
I mean, I don't... Please, feel free.
Can you show us something?
Yeah, I know.
I was showing you the distillery.
Do you have a plan large enough that we can see the plan?
I do.
One thing, tell who you are. Pardon? Your name.
Bob Folligno. Oh, Bob, you live right on the corner. I understand. Absolutely. Good, cool. Yes, I actually have plans, which I've submitted to them. This is kind of a site plan for the building overall. This is Rogers Marina. What we were planning on doing on that particular property is not much downstairs, maybe making a grocery store downstairs, but the upstairs, the half of the yellow building, it would be to glass the front of it, put out a deck, and put our distilling and tasting room operation on that top floor. Floor plan here is 2,400 square feet. Essentially, what you do, and you'll see by the pictures, because there's a lot of little companies in those pictures, that's why I submitted that. Half of your building inside on the upstairs is behind glass, where you have your still and your little mash tanks. And then out, the other half, is where you'd have a tasting bar, where people come in and they... We could talk about that. It's $3 for three tastings. It's how it's typically done on the wine trails or any of the distilleries. And what you're really doing is you're trying to sell... You're selling bottles, retail. And you're selling branded merchandise, like t-shirts and glasses and things like that. So, that's essentially how the operation works. A micro-distillery is run just like a winery is currently run. It's a tasting room. You know, if you're producing a product to sell, really by the bottle, you know. Typically, in an operation like this, about 35% of your sales are done to the retail customers walking in the door, and 65% are to bars and restaurants in your local community. It's kind of a local thing. You know, you want to produce a product that... You want to do it in a facility that's pretty, that you draw people in so they can see it. It's like a destination. And then you want Bonnie Castle to be selling your product in their bar or, you know, in their restaurant. You want to co-locate in a community. It's working quite well. Like, for example, in San Francisco, in the Marina District in San Francisco, five of them have popped up in the last two years. It's kind of like a vibrant, little funky business. It's not a bar, because that would change the flavor of it. You know, if you had people sitting there drinking at a bar, you wouldn't get the husband and wife team who are out for the day trip that want to come in and taste. You know, it's a different feel than a bar. So, generally, that's how the operation... That's how the sales side work. The operationside, which I think is of concern to neighbors. And I understand the whole quality of life thing, because I live in Hammond, which is both sides of the wind. That's ground zero for wind issues, you know. So, I understand the quality of life and business arguments that people always have. So, I tried to research other communities that have had like operations brought about in the village. And there was a couple that really jumped out at me that I thought were pretty cool. And one of them, for example, in Illinois, had to do with smell. So, they brought in experts. The same kind of operation was going on in Illinois. Understand that when you distill something, what you're essentially doing is you're taking like beer, you could say beer, which is fermented, and then you distill it in one of these pieces of equipment. You're boiling it. You're not quite boiling it at about 185 degrees. The vapor, the alcohol vapor comes off, it goes through a low condenser, and it drifts out. So, you're not even boiling water, but essentially, you could almost think a boiling beer. All of the smells that are developed in like a brew pub or in that process are in the beer part, you know, like where they dump the grain into the big vat, and the water goes in, and it mixes and it boils, and you bring it up to temperature, and then you pump it into a tank that starts your fermentation, which starts the distillation. We are not going to do that in the village. What we're going to do is we're going to do what we call our mashing on a farm in Hammond. That's where we would take our corn, for example, grind it up, mix it with water, bring it up to temperature, put it in a stainless steel tank, 250-gallon tank, and we're having one made. A little trailer comes in to our facility, and we pump it into the fermenters. So, all of... Any of the dust, any of the smell or any of that won't be done in the village. And I'm not the first person to think of it, and that's why I brought this up, is because... I'll give you... This is a dialogue that went on between a zoning board and an expert in... How close is it? Galena, Illinois. All right? And... Now, this is an individual. His name is Boranski. He said he had done some research on breweries and brew pubs prior to tonight's meeting. He asked if the brewing process would be from start to finish, or would they buy a wort to begin the process? So, this is an individual in the public. And then their expert said, "Bell said that they would have the grain delivered to them. This would not be pre-prepared." So, this is in this community of Billian, Illinois. Boranski said that this is part that concerns him. "It appears that this beginning process, where the grain is boiled, is where the odors, perhaps offensive to some people, are most evident. What can be done to eliminate the unpleasantness of this?" Bell said he's concerned with this also. "The smell is unmistakable. He wants to make sure that the brewery does not emit these odors. There are scrubbing systems that can be installed in the vents to remove the odors." First of all, you can do that in your building, if you were going to do this. Then, another individual, Rosenthal, said he had never noticed any offensive odors from Bricktown, the microbrewery in Dubuque, Iowa. Boranski asked, "What was the process that Bricktown used?" And the response was, "They do not bring in malted barley." What Bell is proposing would be to bring in 50-pound bags of malted barley, which is then dumped in the brewing vessel with water and boiled. Bricktown doesn't do that. They buy an extract, a molasses, which is the result of the initial boiling and the malt process, and then add the boiled water then. It's a cheaper way to microbrew, but it eliminates the smell. So, in other words, you could actually buy the raw material as a malt, but we're going to do it on the farm. And the reason we're going to do it on the farm is because we have to be back at the farm anyway. Because when we're all done... Let's say we take 120 gallons of water, mixed with some corn, which you ferment, and from that 120 gallons, by the way, you will get about 10 gallons of whiskey. Well, you're left with about 100 gallons of alcoholless grain mash.
Alcoholless.
Right. And what you do is you pump that off the bottom, and you take it back and feed it to the cows. It's used all over the country as cow feed and deer feed. So, they're happy cows, but I mean, that's the idea. So, you're back at the farm anyway, you know, with your tank, your big stainless steel tank. You dump it out, you feed it to the cows, and then you refill it. We estimate that would happen about two to three times a week. We'd have our little trailer, you know, come into town, and it would be innocuous. You wouldn't even know it. It's certainly not as significant as the gasoline trucks that come in and pump the 9,000 gallons into the tank. So, we understand the smell thing. We believe... Well, first of all, they say that if your distillation process smells, you have a leak. You need to stop that, you know, because really, you're just trying to turn that vapor smell into liquid, and you do that through a condensing thing. So, the distillation has no smell. We're going to not have any flour dust or any of that in the village anyway, so the open-pot boiling will be done outside the village. But one other thing about smell, I've talked to people in the village that have gone along the whiskey trails, and then like you go down in Tennessee, Kentucky, and they're much like the wine trails. They have whiskey trails. And if you go into a big old distillery, they're open. They're all open vat, and it's because the yeast and all that stuff, it gets into the wood and the beams and all that, over the years that it's been doing, it's been operating. So, what they do is they ferment through a natural yeast-ing process. All the crap is up there in the ceiling, and it falls... By the way, this is what you're drinking. And it falls into the mash, and it ferments, and all that smell is permeating the whole building. What we plan on doing, we probably want to make about 10 different flavors of things. I want to make like cherry berry vodka. I want to make, you know, bourbon. I want to make maybe cherry whiskey. We can't have these odors and these yeasts and these things floating around in our facility, because it will affect the next thing we do. We're thinking of this as more like a laboratory than an open pit, you know, mashed, smelly operation. It wouldn't lend itself to what we're doing. It just wouldn't. So, I want... People need to understand that if something escapes from our facility, it will be by accident or by just, you know, some natural little thing. And here's another interesting little tidbit. When they do the fermentation process, talk about what the smell is that comes off of a fermenter. That's how they get all the carbon dioxide in our country to use in sodas and things like that, is these big ethanol factories, they suck the carbon dioxide off of the top, which is really what the byproduct is of the fermentation product process. And then that carbon dioxide goes into Diet Coke or whatever. So, I mean, it's essentially flavorless and smellless. So, the process in and of itself is pretty clean, you know.
Are you planning on selling the carbon dioxide?
I'm sorry?
Are you planning on selling it?
We're talking about making root beer. We may do that. We don't know the process of that. That's another piece of equipment, you know, but...
Are you required to have environmental emissions permit?
No. It's clean. I mean, you can lick the floor.
You say it's clean, but are you required to have a permit? And where are the limits of permits required?
We have not... You know, there are DC requirements for just virtually everything. There's village requirements for what we're putting into the septic and things like that. The requirements for this are incredible. I mean, the laws and the processes and the things that we will have to go through to get to the unprol before our first drop is pumped out and sold, it is intense, you know. I can't tell you, because being in a municipal set... Give me an example.
Now, he answered my question. Will you have to apply for environmental permission?
With who? State, federal, or county, or city?
Start wherever you want.
Well, I mean, we'll have to do whatever's required.
He filed a seeker. He filed... He did file a seeker, which is the environmental equivalent of us asking to be the lead agency on this. So, it goes to environmental, and if the environmental group says, "That's not something you guys should be handling. That's not something you should be approving," then they submit it back to us that we are not the lead agency, they are, or whatnot. So, he has filed a seeker, applying for... We're applying to be the lead agency to approve this, as far as the environment.
Who, the village plan?
The village plan, yes. That's what the seeker's for. It pulls in the environmental regulatory pieces of New York State. So, they review it, and they will look at it and give us permission to be the lead agency, or Jefferson County, or whoever, to be the lead agency.
Where would I go to research that process?
As far as the seeker goes?
Yeah, as far as the seeker goes.
I would imagine...
Because I'd like to see him apply to the state, not to you guys.
Well, we're actually going to apply to the federal government.
Yeah, he does that too. He does a lot more than just this piece.
This is a little thing. You almost have to look at this backwards. Before we can produce and sell a product, we will need to get a permit from the TTV. That's the Alcohol Tobacco Taxation Bureau, which controls our ability to do this, to actually produce it. And before that will happen, we have to demonstrate that we have met every state, county, you know, city, village ordinance and requirement. So, we will never get to that end until we go through that process. And quite frankly, it might take us a year. You know what I mean? And it may not happen. Like, you're correct. If we were to do something in a manner that is not appropriate, then we will never get our permit. So, I mean, we don't...
We're just governing the use permit of the building and how that adheres to village law and village code, and that's the only thing we govern, is what you can do in our village according to our village laws. We don't have the right to validate any of those other organizations or anything.
Sure. As a neighbor to Earl Larson, before you go on and on and on and on, if you do get David's Rogers Marina property, how much of it are you going to get rid of to keep just the big boat building?
Well, let me just say this.
Do you want to show him the apartment, the house?
Oh, no. I wasn't going to get rid of anything. I wasn't going to get rid of anything. In fact, I'm going to make it look nicer. This is just my rough drawing of it. I wasn't planning on doing anything on the top side, except re-size those houses to look a little better. And I...
It looks nice.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to make the property look good, first of all. But now, we get to the important part, and I could go on and on here. I must say that when we first approached this project, it was with the understanding that Rogers Marina was available to be purchased. So, we put in a purchase offer. Dave and I have gotten to be quite good friends, and he wants all this to happen. But lo and behold, there was a purchase offer put in place a year and a half ago by another party, and there was money put down on the Marina, and I don't want to get into the legalities of this, because there may be a battle in the end, which I don't want to put Dave through, but it's possible that we will not get this property. That... So, I've talked to Shuki about this, and I would like to say that I would like to... Now, this is interesting, because it may be a different neighbor. I would like to have this concept put forth in the Marina Development District and/or Business District in the Bay, no matter where it ends up being, because I may end up buying another building, or business, or lot, to do it myself. So, as a neighbor, you may be free. You may be out. You may not. You know what I mean? But I will say that I believe... You know, it's funny, because in some ways, I would like to see this be really a draw. I'd like to see it be a draw. I know that if you're sitting there at night, and you've got another person walking by your house, that's going to be a pain in the butt, but it's not like we're going to run this thing late. You know, most tasting rooms run from 11 to 6, maybe 11 to 8 on the weekends. I mean, that's our idea anyway. It's not like we're running a full-time, you know, long, drawn-out restaurant and bar. I think that could be cool, but I also understand that it could be a kind of a pain in the ass to live next door to a going business, but I... But I mean, Rogers Marina in and of itself is a going business, you know, not a big business.
We live next to a going business now. The issue to me was, are we just creating another bar on the beach?
No. You know, Mike Gerger asked me that question, you know. He said, "How many bar stools are you putting in the bar?" I'm not putting bar stools. I want people in and out in 20 minutes. I want them to come in, I want them to pay their $3 per person or $6, you know, to get there's six different tastings of the different things we have. I want our people to explain the process, maybe take them into the still to see how something's working, or we want it all to be behind glass so they can see it anyway. I'd love them to buy a bottle of something, maybe a t-shirt or a glass, and then get the hell out and get the next person. I mean, that's truly what the operation is set to be. That's how the wine research is set up.
Okay. Also, though, in your introduction here, it was said you were going to maintain the gas docks in the Marina?
Yes, I believe that's what you have in your application.
If we get this... Yeah, let me tell you this little story. I was in there like a couple of weeks ago, because I've spent some time there with Dave now, you know. And Andy, the son, was lifting a boat, and there were people walking down the town dock, you know, a typical personality, looking for something to do, right? And they see... And there were actually some Japanese people, too. They were seeing that this was being raised, and all of a sudden, you know, five minutes later, I see all these people in the door with their cameras and their phones and all that, that had walked across the dock through Coleman's, and they're all like taking a movie of these people lifting the boat in the boathouse. Well, to me, that's wonderful. I mean, you're literally... There's a little show going on for the people. I want that. I want that activity. And quite frankly, one of the things we had talked about was taking the back of that old boathouse, that would be the big open boathouse, putting jail cells across the back, and putting our bourbon and whiskey in barrels behind the jail cell, so people walking down the dock could look in there, and they could see that, you know, clean that all up in there. So, we want to make it an active, operating, viable Marina that also has something that will make a little money, because quite frankly, the Marina business is kind of dead. You know, gas is so expensive. Everybody's filling up with, you know... You've got their boat on the trailer, they're filling up at the gas station, you know. So, the Marina business in and of itself, every Marine in America is for sale. So, we looked at this Marina as, what can we do to augment it, to make this, spend some money on, make it into something nice?
You're going to buy just that property, or all of David's property?
All of it. Oh, I'm sorry. No. He has the old boathouse over on...
Otter Street.
Otter Street. What we talked about was leaving that as a legacy business for his son, Andy, so that Dave... You know, Dave, their family's been in the marine industry business for 100 years or whatever, and there's something in there, and Dave, even I may not even think or realize this, too, that you should keep that family name in that industry. So, that was the goal, is to split this up. We would just take the downtown. We would leave with him the operation over on Otter Street, and we would even manage that for them while they're going to transition, so Andy learns how to operate it, and maybe do some mechanic work over there, or maybe do mechanic work at our place, but also wooden boat work over there, and plus up on Hurricane Hill. So, our goal was just to buy the downtown property and let there be a legacy business there for the Rogers family. Hit me.
I have a question. I'm Linda Keeler. My question is, so you're going to have... This is going to happen upstairs.
That was the idea, yeah.
Okay. And then downstairs, you said you're going to have a market?
On the right-hand side, as you look at the building, it's kind of split 50/50 right there. It would be the market on the right side, and then let it be the ship store Marina side on the left, you know, with oil and, you know...
Like it is now.
Like it is now. You're going to have the gas, still have gas, and possibly some things going on with boatlifting. Where's the... And if you're not going to take anything down, leave the house and everything, where's the parking happening?
We expect it to be a walk-to business. We don't expect there to be cars. We don't... I mean...
But there's cars at a winery, where the wine tasting...
That's because people, you know, and I understand your question, you know. I talked to... Actually, I talked to Kathy Garlock about this, because she lives up... She owns the house right on the left of the driveway, and I said that we would not be adverse to putting a sign up at the end that says, "Parking by disabled permit only beyond this point." So, literally, making that parking lot that is in between the houses, that's for people that are disabled, right? And it would be for our employees or, you know, coming to the Marina. But no, I mean, quite frankly, it's probably the worst business plan on the planet Earth here, you know. You can't get there, you can't come in. But they're going to have to find a place to park. I mean, that was true, our goal, because really, what we thought is we would try to suck people off the dock, the walkers, you know, 1,000 people a day. I don't know how many people it is, I can't get a demographic on that, but there's a lot of people that walk down the town dock a day. I want to make this so visually appealing that I want them to walk to us. It's exactly 400 paces from in front of the business on the town dock, around the long way to the business, 400 paces. So, if you can't walk 400 paces to go to my distillery, but you'll drive 120 miles to go to a winery, we don't want you, you know. So, I don't think it's going to be a big car draw.
Well, that is something that we do as a planning board, parking spaces and things like that. That is a legitimate question, though. How many parking spaces are in that area right now?
I think there's 10. Andy painted it the other day. There's about 10 spots in there right now. And that's tight, though. I mean, I don't...
I was going to say, there's four behind Ellen's house, but there's another six.
They painted it. Didn't you see? They just painted a whole bunch of lines. I think there's 10 people that park in there. Because we're not going to run the...
We're not going to have...
Well, think of it. We're not going to run the ice factory anymore. That'll be gone. So, you know, that's a lane of three parking right there.
That's where they'll park.
Generally... Anyway, you guys don't care. From a business perspective, you're more homeowners, you know. You care about it from how it's going to affect your life, and I understand that. I think from a community standpoint, I think the business is... I think from a community standpoint, I think the business is, it seems like a good idea. You know, here's a little town in Canoa, British Columbia, that just went through this. And, you know, I mean, to make a long story short, they, what they did is they broke it down between micro-distilleries and large distilleries, and, you know, they went out and hired the consultants and all that. This is their planning board people saying, blah, 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 blah. Generally speaking, inquiries land use management staff have received in this regard have involved businesses seeking to have retail storefronts with tourist-oriented commercial areas, within tourist-oriented commercial areas, with small-scale craft production in the rear of the building. After discussion and research from other jurisdictions, the use was deemed to be appropriate from a land use perspective within urban centers. That's kind of what it is. I mean, it's very, let me tell you this. Back before prohibition, there were roughly 10,000 distilleries in the US. After prohibition, and when it came back to life, it's been an incredibly heavily lobbied industry that's protected by these big distilleries. Right now in the US, there's only 250 distilleries. And of those, 200 of them are micro-distilleries, 'cause it's just starting to happen. In Germany alone right now, there are 33,000 of these. Every, you know, every little town and village, and, you know, these are all over Europe. So it's not unusual what we're trying to do, just a little different.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I'm really ignorant about this. You're going to serve different flavors of vodka, is that...
Well, that's one of the things we would do.
What else would you serve?
Just the different, you know, like, we've gone, we did the micro, the winery tour in the Finger Lakes two weeks ago, just to see how the industry's going. There's a couple of distilleries down there, and I think that, I think like Finger Lakes Distillery had maybe, how many things?
Well, I was gonna say, but you don't wanna explain the difference between serving and tasting?
Right. Well, but this is how many things we have that one could want.
Right.
A dozen.
Me, I mean...
Would you say before, gin, vodka?
Yeah, but you can make different kinds of gin.
Right.
There could be different flavors of gin. Vodka, I mean, here's a vodka.
And you use only three stills, so you're changing...
I actually would use one still. That's why this has gotta be pristine. It's gotta be clean. I mean, we gotta, you know, this has gotta be a very clean operation. You could, vodka, that's a misnomer really. It's a neutral grade spirits. It has no flavor. And then you choose to add something to it. Like, say for example, you took vodka, which is the flavorless, you know, 80 proof alcohol, and then you put that in a vat with fermenting cherries for a week. And then you mix that with water and you redistill it to get a cherry vodka, and then you put that in sherry barrels for six months, and you make cherry-sherry vodka. There's a lot of things. I mean, we're cooking is essentially what we're doing. I want this to be so, so good, I want people to leave the building. I mean, literally, that, you know, the flag, we're unlimited on what we could do, you know?
When you say it's a tasting room, and so you have maybe, you could taste six, you said?
Each individual by law can only taste three per day, three one-third ounces. It's not much.
So that's an ounce. Okay, I guess my concern is, one of my concerns is, because the way this village is set up, I'm sorry, it's nothing but a bunch of drunks. I'm tired of seeing people pee on that street in front of me, and they do it. We watched someone pee in Cavalarios last night. I mean, it's so obvious.
I think of beer bottles and micro bottles.
Oh, yeah, they just run the flow. Just a bunch of them. Mice will put, mice will put porta potters down the food, you know, because it's...
You know, if we, if we ever allowed the facility to become that, you know, like, say you co-located it with a bar restaurant, which by law you could do at some point, you could blow out a wall or something and make a bar restaurant that would allow you to serve your alcohol you produce.
What you just said was really concerning.
Right.
What you've described isn't too big a deal, but two years down the road, when you decide to expand and start serving, then it's a different...
That's a whole, he's gotta come back here.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. You know what I mean?
But you allow any bar in this place.
Well, hold on, I've only been on here for a year.
Planning board allows any bar whenever they want.
One at a time.
One person at a time, please.
I understand. Yeah, that's why I fired up.
What you ordered, your village ordinance says, in general special use permits, A, the proposed special use must not conflict by virtue, character with neighboring uses. I consider the food street primarily a residential street. Now, this is not...
Right, but it's also got, it already has a marina there, correct?
A marina's, he's not talking about a marina.
Right.
He's talking about serving alcohol.
Tasting alcohol. He said he wasn't gonna serve?
Serving alcohol.
I'm just using his vernacular, that's all.
Sure, I...
Serving alcohol. And he's making it also.
Well, I don't think there should be, and let me just say this. You're absolutely right, there are two different things. I don't think that the village should seriously consider the fact that I can't make it. Because I think, there's no harm, there's no harm, no foul in making it. It's a wonderfully pristine, clean draw, you know what I mean? There's nothing, the drinking and all of that, that's a separate issue, I think, so...
Sure, yeah. But we put up with it every weekend.
Right.
Is he, he's not gonna, he's hoping to sell those bottles of liquor to those very same bars? So, I mean, he's not saying he's not part of the drinking process.
He's gonna sell to the walking pedestrian too.
Well, by bottle, by bottle, yes, by bottle, but I don't think they'll drink them.
You guys already allowed people to walk down the street with open containers.
Well, not me. Come on, that's the planning board.
Village Valley's...
Right, right.
But might I interject just one thing? Would that be no different than if I decided to open a liquor store there? They could still walk in, they could buy the bottle, they could go up, so you can drink it. So I don't think we should, you know, I mean, that could happen.
You know?
Yeah.
It's, what is it, marine residential right now?
Yes, it's marine residential, Andy.
So marine development?
Mean, excuse me, not residential, you're right, it's not, marine developmental district. And according to the law, the MDD, the Marine Developmental District, anything that's allowed in the general residential district by a special permit is allowed in that district.
Oh, by special permit, but we're not...
By special permit, right.
It's giving him a special permit.
Right, like, if he was to do it in a general resident, he would do the same thing.
So he, we're going to go ahead and in the future, serve it, as in a bar? Or develop a restaurant to serve it?
I believe he has to go back to planning, does he not? If he was gonna open a restaurant and everything?
Right, because I will say that there is no, there's no viable business where you can co-locate a tasting room with a bar. It's not permitted by law. It doesn't even make good sense, because you can't have some drunk standing there drinking, or you're trying to get the nicely dressed couple to come in and buy your $35 bottle of flavored vodka. It doesn't work. But you are correct, that if some year, point down the road, three years or what, 'cause it takes a while to get this going, pretty frankly. At some point down the road, we say, "Hey, let's open a seafood restaurant and sell our vodka on that property," you know, and like, you know, rip house it. Yeah, I mean, whatever you gotta go through, you go through. I don't think it really has anything to do with what we're doing here or that. It would have to be separate. It would have to be a separate operation by law. That's New York State law.
Well, you've gotta comply with different things from us, if it's a restaurant, something with parking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, okay.
Changing use. You're just opening the door here, that's all. You're just opening the door.
We'll open up...
Once you approve this, you open the door.
Bob, hold on a minute, Roger.
Yes?
I believe that Mr. Reifenstein has the right to finish his presentation, then we will open the meeting for public comment, if we may.
Hey, I'm, I'm...
He's engaging us, that's why I didn't want it.
That's okay, but let's stick to the, stick to the plan and finish hearing your plan, please, sir. If you will.
Right, but let me just say this. You're absolutely right, except if I was standing in front of you right now, forget the distillery, and said I wanna open a restaurant, what's the argument? You live next door? I mean, that's really what you're saying. And just, you know, honestly, like, pure conversation, right? Forget the distillery part, but if I wanna say I'm gonna buy Rogers Marina, I'm gonna open a seafood restaurant.
I don't think Bethune Street, Bethune Street needs another restaurant either, but...
Well, I'm not...
Say something hypothetical, like a grocery store.
Yeah, what, a grocery store?
I mean, there's no grocery store now. I'd let, I'd go ahead with Danny and let him finish his presentation, but you said it, I consider Bethune Street a residential street. None of those other operations are compliant with the residential street.
But Bethune Street is MDD?
Well, one side is, the other side's business.
Is M...
There's business district too, right, yeah. I can't, I can't even talk on any of the zoning side. You know, I understand what you're saying. I can't speak to, I can only speak to what our intent is. But I, I'm not gonna say we're gonna open a restaurant. I'm not gonna say that three years, or four years, five years down the road, Christ, how long until we do a restaurant? I don't know that I am. But I would certainly hate to preclude what we're planning on doing because of something that may not happen five years from now that you can then review in some other manner. I would hope that that wouldn't be the stumbling block in this plan here. You know what I mean?
Are you done?
I am done with my presentation, yes.
Yep, we will take you guys in order, hopefully, or take you in some sort of... I'd ask you to raise your hand and we'll recognize you so you don't speak all on top of each other, yes.
Could you just explain to me how that street is zoned, please?
That's a new one for me, we gotta get a case. Shuki might actually help me a little bit on this one. But we have several different zones in this little tiny village, which is kinda interesting how that all... And they all have different rules as they apply. They're telling me, and I don't have a master map myself, I just know where they, what the rules are for each one of the districts. So where a street particularly falls, I don't know yet. But according to Shuki there, the one side of the street is the MDD, Marine Developmental District, which is actually different than the Marine Residential District. You've got the map. Is that how it goes? And I've been at this a long time already, since you measured land.
Thank you. Little while away here in New York.
Good, good, go ahead, Andy. Your doctor think the same thing today?
Yep. I gotta restrict the crime of permanent street where you are.
Probably got my way.
You know, I live on seven, behind the church. Okay, I live in residential. You, Bob lives on the racket off.
And the corner, the corner where the musky lounge is, is what? Business. Just the musk...
That's business?
That's just the musky lounge.
And obviously Cavalarios is called business?
No, Cavalarios is Marine Developmental.
Cavalarios is Marine...
Everything on the water, on the riverside.
Okay. What's that means, Marine Developmental? That's what I'm confused. What is Marine Developmental?
Yeah, Shuki, can they, can they get a copy of those at the village offices during normal business hours? Can I, can I make a, can I make a comment? And I'm sorry, ladies, I don't know who we are.
Linda Keeler?
Linda?
Chris Yancey.
Chris. Our, our role here is not to debate how Bethune Street should be zoned.
Oh, I know, I know.
Bethune Street's already zoned. I understand your concerns that you live next door to Rogers Marina, and I understand your concerns of what you think possibly could happen there. But our role, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Millen, is to interpretate what Mr. Reifenstein is proposing, and listen to your comments. But unfortunately, Bob, if it is zoned Marine Developmental District, and he is within the parameters of the existing law, that's the way it is. We, we...
The way I read this...
But we're glad to hear your comments on that.
The way I read this, he's asking for a variance.
He is, but we're not the...
So he's not within the existing law?
We're not the body that's gonna grant that.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, let me talk in here for just a second. We were recommended by Mark Givo that he needed a variance. I was contacted by the planning board last week, and he really doesn't need a variance.
No, that's the way I read it too, Mr. Miller.
The county told, our lawyer told us he did, and the county says he didn't. And we have to wait until we see if the county gives us back the reply.
Can I ask a question too? What's your opinion about the business district? Do I need a variance in the business district?
We didn't apply for the business.
I'm just curious, from a legal perspective.
Yeah, I didn't look into it. According to, again, the way your permit reads, it's in the Marine Developmental District, and the Marine Developmental District is allowed to do anything the GR district does with permits. Same thing.
General residential.
General residential, sorry. I shouldn't speak in score terms, I am sorry. The general residential district, so that's what, basically, the Marine Developmental District, you're allowed to do whatever you can do in the general residential district. And in the general residential district, you're allowed to apply for a use permit, special use permit for light manufacturing. And that was the other question, whether we considered this light manufacturing. And if, you look at it, the by-product is natural, what you're making is natural, the ingredients are all natural. I mean, it's a marina, they got oil and fuel and paint thinners and all kinds of stuff. The stuff he's using is, you know, pretty harmless in comparison. So I personally feel that it falls within light industrial, but that is not specified in village code. What is light industrial? That is something we decide as a group.
But you're saying that you do intend for what we commonly refer to as the metal building to continue to do some boat repair?
Oh, absolutely, I don't wanna screw that.
And so, we're not gonna get rid of the oil and the gas and all this stuff that you just said is no big deal.
Oh, I didn't say it was anything, I said his other stuff, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is the...
Okay.
It's the light manufacturing process, is my interpretation.
And plus they make ice there, they manufacture ice there right now, which we would take out. Can't do that anymore, yeah.
Can I ask another question? Who's, the whole marina part, Rogers, be it he or his son, are still operating?
I mean...
Or are you operating?
No, well, I would take that, well, everybody wants to stay, you know? I mean, we wanna keep Dave, and we wanna keep Andy, the father and son. I mean, we would expect them to do the marina side, yes, if that was a question.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
But I don't even know if we're gonna get it, so I...
This gets more and more interesting.
You don't even know if you're gonna get it.
Well, that's exactly right, you know, but I don't think from a, at least it gives me an opportunity to speak to the community at all, because it may happen, and to the planning board members, or the planning board members, zoning, zoning, right?
Planning.
About the concept, you know, the location may change, but the concept is not going to change. The laws dictate what we can and cannot do from federal, from state, and from the town. You know, we wanna work it all the way down, but you have to work it this way first. So we may very well be back to you to do it in another location, and we may still be your neighbors. By how I look at that.
Couple of additional questions. Do you use, do you use any cooling water? Do you draw any water out of the...
No, they, no, we weren't, there's actually a chiller. Everything is recirculating, and typically, what circulates around the bottom of your tank is heated soybean oil. That's the heating part. And then the cooling part, which is just the cooling, it's a small thing around your condenser. Now, I mean, a lot of people use tap water, you can have a little cooler, you can just run. It's not that big of an operation. I mean, you can run this out of a bathtub.
If he was running water out of the river? Seeker would be trouble.
Are you discharging the city sewer, or are you discharging the upper bay?
Well, we would, no, we would, well, first of all, we wouldn't even discharge it, we would just recirculate it. But as far as if we washed the...
His waste products, he's bringing them to the cowl, though, too, remember? All of his waste products he's using as feed, so...
He's not gonna dump anything in the river.
I understand that, but that's my question. Is there anything going in or out of the river?
No, no, I don't think we'd be allowed, but I was gonna bring this up a moment ago. That we were at a, we went to school at a place outside of Woodstock, a distillery outside Woodstock, which is a bigger operation, you know, and it's Woodstock, they're pretty tight there, I gotta be honest, they're pretty tough. And they're running their, they're running their cooling water out of a well, and they're right beside a stream, a protected trout stream, which just went all the way to, you know, head of the DEC. They run their cooling water out on the ground, and it goes into the trout stream. I mean, this is pure, it's clear, you know?
But he's not doing that.
I'm not even doing that, but I'm saying it's pretty clean operation, yeah.
Do you anticipate that there will be an increase in the use of water and sewer at your facility?
No, in fact, I already talked to a critter about that, because he's involved with the DEC and the consent order, or whatever that was. And we, and we explained to him what we were gonna be using, especially when you consider we're taking out the ice, we think it'll be a significant decrease in the water use on the property.
Do you have any air, any air emissions? You're saying, because you're doing...
It's electric.
...distilling or whatever, on your farm, this process is gonna have no air emission?
Yeah, the distillation is absolutely airtight, it has to be. And the fermentation process, there are pressure relief valves on the top of the tanks. I mean, I can't say that it's not gonna, you know, the carbon dioxide, you know, builds up and the valve goes, and it's gonna smell like cherries, you know, but I mean, you have to put your nose on it. My family, we were all in a, in a big distillery down outside the Finger Lakes. We're talking big, 165 gallons an hour. We're talking 2,500 gallons a year here, okay? 165 gallons an hour, mammoth, big tanks, huge building. And it really had no discernible smell. And it was interesting, one of the workers walked by with a big test tube that was full, like, it almost looked like milk, it was the foamy milk, it was the mash, is what it was. And they were doing a BRICS test, they were checking to see what the sugar content was in that thing. And I asked the guy, I said, "Can I smell it?" And I took it and I put it up to my nose, and then I smelled it, it smelled like bread. But the interesting part was, I was in this mammoth factory where it was going on, and you really didn't smell it anywhere. And this is huge compared to what we're doing, so...
Well, the vapors are your money, right? The vapors are what you're...
Exactly right. The vapor, you know, you lose the vapors, you lose your money, because that's what, the alcohol is lighter and less temperature, you know? But I will say this, you know, I was in the old boathouse the other day, and it was a still morning, and it smelled like pulled pork.
Yes.
It was just being spoken right around the corner. And I was thinking, you know, if I added some strawberries to this, or cranberry, cranberry vodka, it would be like Thanksgiving in the South, is what I thought. So there are smells floating around, but it's...
How many employees do you anticipate?
I mean, within the confines of the marina too, I mean, I would think that we're probably talking eight people, you know? You know, most of the tasting rooms, they have a couple people work in the tasting room, and then you got, you know, a couple people working in the still, and then we have the marina itself.
Brewmaster?
Shifts, yeah, it looks exactly, there's Mike back there.
Oh, you're the brewmaster, okay.
It's not a huge operation, you know, but I would expect it to be pristine. Whatever we do, I want to throw money at it and make it so it looks good, you know?
Will this be year-round?
You know, it's interesting you say that, because, you know, it's hard to say, you're not gonna get any walk-by traffic, you know, the wineries, they shut down, all of that shuts down. If we found an outlet through bars and restaurants and liquor stores for our finished product, we would probably run the distillery in the tasting room, you know? We'd run the distillery, the still itself will probably only operate about five hours a day. We've talked about this, we might even boil water through it, you know, so some people think it's doing something. I mean, you could, you know, you don't want to say that, but just to make it part of the show. But if we had an outlet for it, we would certainly keep it open year-round. And of course, if we had a viable restaurant, we would, but we can't talk about that right now, but that is really our plan.[1749.61]
You still hoping to sell your product to all these bars and restaurants and hotels around here, too?
Yeah, you know, when we were down in Watkins Glen, we went into a really nice brew pub that had a display on its bar of Finger Lakes Distilleries, which is a distillery down there. And it had on there what their different things were they had to offer at the bar, you know, so that's co-locating, it's local business. And I wanted to try their, it was like their blueberry strawberry vodkas, blue straw vodka or something. They were sold out. And it works, you know, the local businesses that are selling locally made products, it works, you know, it's a, and you can bet that everybody, and that's how it works, is the distillery, they have little flyers for the different, you know, tourist things, and then, you know, you just kind of work together, so, you know. I hope I sell some, you know what I mean?
May or may not be year-round.
Yeah, that's kind of how we're looking at it, you know?
Well, and just to clarify a little bit, the tasting portion of it will definitely not be open year-round. The distilling portion, portion of it possibly.
Right, yeah, because I mean, in February, there's...
Michael Young.
There, there's not much going on here in February.
Question.
We're working on it.
I guess I'm a little disappointed, your presentation's all verbal. And you do have a drawing there, but what's presented as documents and what is available to us that, to the public, that we can have copies of? Your view or...
I think they're, they're open to see anything we've got, right? Isn't that the case?
Are there copies of these available to us?
Yeah, you can go right to the village office.
Done with the village office, is there copies?
Tell you what, you can have that one, and I'll get a new copy from this, this Williams.
Thank you.
I won't give them all.
I have another question.
Yes.
Are you intending to buy Kathy Foligno's house as well? To be a part of...
Kathy Garlock, is that what you mean?
Well, yes.
It's Trevor Garlock, I guess that's in Trevor's name. I know, you know, you probably don't want to hear this, but the, the best possible thing would be if I can park these, I'm so busy.
I don't know if that's...
I mean, I can't look down the road and say, yeah, I'm going to get a thousand people a day, I mean, I get fifty people a day. I mean, I don't know.
Hoping you've got a five-year plan.
Yeah, well, you can only do, I can't even get a demographic out of the village on how many people walk down the town dock a day, so I can't adequately answer how many people are going to potentially walk up into my business, because there's no way to extrapolate information. So, yeah, you're right, I mean, this is the kind of plan where if I went to a bank and said, I want to do this, no, they're not going to do it, because I can't get any information to help.
And your plan is to be a landlord for the yellow apartment building?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, because two of the people that live there work at the marina.
I know this for fact.
Yeah, 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 and good people, so we don't want to screw with that.
That's been a revolving door over time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you got to remember, he's going to, he wants his customers walking by there, so I would imagine he'd want to keep it orderly and clean.
You know, I understand that, they, again, five-year plan.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a legit question.
You know, I understand the suspicion.
You know, what would be a great five-year plan? Is if the village allows me to put a buzzer on the town dock, that I can have my little, my little party barge in my boathouse, and if people push the button, and I'll go over to the town dock and pick them up, and I will, and then all these problems will go away.
Because when you look at Dave's property,
Yeah.
Big chunk, nice square, lovely piece, with the yellow house, because that property goes down with water, and Ellen's just makes it square, and Dave's house goes away, and that's a lovely piece to develop.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I don't want, I don't want, I, I mean, that's not my plan. You know, this is going to be, this is more art than it is business, I must say. I hope you make money, I hope I don't lose a lot of money, but I, I think that your fears of, you know, of a thousand drunken fools walking in this business, they're, they're not, it's not going to happen, because it's not the flavor that we want to have, you know what I mean?
That's not my worry. My worry is whether or not you standing in front of us are feeding us a line to get what you want, or whether that's really your plan.
Well, I understand.
And that will sell your relationship with us.
Yeah.
Well, he's applying for a use per, for us, so he's, he's got to comply with what he tells us.
Right. Here, here's a little statistic. Fifty-seven percent in a tourism town, fifty-seven percent of all tourists decide on what to do, where to eat, where to drink, based on what locals tell them. I need this community to be behind what we do. Because I want the sixty percent of the people, I want every business in town to, and every person to talk us up. I'm not going to do that if I have, you know, some different operation. You know, actually, we went, like I said, we just did the wine tour, and I can say, you know, in every tasting room we went to, it was a nice, it was a nice experience. I mean, it was, it is not a bar, it is, it's an upscale experience. I mean, my wife is even talking about doing a tea room, which I don't want to talk about, but, you know? I mean, that's, you know, but that's the flavor that we want to attract. And I agree, you know, that people say... So there you have it. Wait, did I talk too much?
You answered everyone's question, I think that's great. Sometimes people don't get their question answered, so...
So, I don't know, that's all I have.
Any other questions?
Yeah, he's, he's asking for a variance, how do you decide on whether you...
Well, I was told that I, we've actually got to take second chair to this now, right? Is that what you told me, that Jefferson County is actually going to...
This, this, this has to go to the county, to County Plan. The application has to go to them. They do, they go through the whole thing, just like with this, after he has to go to the county out there. They will give recommendations pro or cons, and then they send them back to the village.
For us to consider.
And the village planning board will look that over. This isn't a decision of this planning board should make.
I'm surprised, I would just say, I'm surprised that I have to go in front of the county. I am surprised, because the county has skin in the game through their lending of money to the other distillery.
The reason that you have to go in front of the county is that you are less than five hundred feet from the main highway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's why.
But I only, but that's only if I even need a special use variance, and there hasn't been a determination of that's necessary.
Exactly, that's what they're going to determine.
They are, they are, they are determined.
So, so his next step is to go to the county?
The county has it already.
Okay, so...
The county has it, that's my board, Stephen County, he's the head county planning out there. Everything's been sent to them, they have a board, same as this, and they're going to go through the whole application, because that's a main highway coming down through into the village right there. And anything to do with main highways, any properties within so many feet of a main highway, has to go in front of county planning. So they're going to, they're going to send their recommendation.
And then it comes back to you all?
Back to these things.
We have to consider their recommendations, we can't make a decision without considering what the county tells us.
And can you all make the decision about having a long public meeting?
Probably, probably, that, after the county sends that back, and the board gets their, gets what they found in the county, more than likely, this board would ask Mark Givo to come in, the lawyer, and sit down at the next hearing.
Next public, we do another public?
Well, it's, you're going to open and close, you're going to open and close the public.
Yeah.
But he's going to come in and...
And you can listen to him.
And listen to all his recommendations.
Okay, so explain, so...
So this is your two cents, basically?
This is the only time I will have my two cents.
But?
Yes.
The county still has to look at it.
Correct.
He, they can go to the county meeting too, if they want to. So that's another opportunity, and then when the county gives their recommendations back to us, we don't go back to you to hear another two cents, we take the county's recommendations, what we've heard from you today, what we've seen through law, and then we'll make a decision. But according to Mr. Millitt, the decision will be made in front of them, with the attorney.
Oh, absolutely.
So we can come to that meeting? Will that be posted, when that meeting is?
It has to be.
I mean, that this will be part of that meeting?
It'll be, it'll be a, you can call it a workshop, because you won't have a, you won't, the, the public, after they open and close the public area here, the public can't even be close.
Right, but they have to have an open public meeting, but you can come...
Make a decision. We can't make a decision without you seeing what we're saying.
Being able to be there.
And, and when you do this, I'm sorry, I just don't know the procedure, but when you do this, where will it be announced, this is happening?
It will be on our website, it will be in the Falcon Island Sun.
Okay, thank you.
And it will be here a moment that they make the decision. They, after the county gives their decision, and after they talk to their lawyer, they only have so many days to make their decision. If they don't make their decision within that many days, they wash.
Can I ask a question? Do you usually, you usually, I think I don't understand, you don't have the property yet?
I have an, I have an accepted purchase offer on that property, I also have a purchase offer on another, on another property in the village. There is a question on whether or not my purchase of the marina is superseded by another purchase offer that was put in place some time ago. So I do not have possession of the property, if that's your question. Aside from all other things, my purchase of that property is not dependent on what happens here. I'm going to buy that marina regardless, if, if I can, you know what I mean? This is a side issue, I would love to do this on the property, but if, you know, because that's one of the questions, is this contingent? No, it's not contingent, I, that's a great property, I'm going to make that property look good one way or the other. Whether I do it with a distillery or not, I'd like to buy it and clean it up and make it operate, so... But no, I, it's not in my possession, I would love to, you should have heard the conversation I had with Dave Rogers today, he is incredibly upset, because I don't own it, you know? And, and there's a perfect example, Dave Rogers, who is the person who's going to be living right in the middle of this. You know, I'll talk to him about what he thinks is going to happen there, you know? Because he's, he likes this idea, because he could sell it, quite frankly, he could sell to other people for more money, you know? So, that's all I have.
That's all we have.
Just, just a question on the, the process again, is this, this information is at the county level now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then what is the timing for that?
The county meets, uh, in the month, do you know what day they make? I think it's the last Thursday of the month.
We should get a letter from them telling, telling us that it's on their agenda, once they've got their agenda up.
And if you want to call up here, they can tell you what day that is, because they'll send it out ahead. They send every, every team that's on the agenda to each person that has an application, they'll send it to this stuff.
And we have to have it to them by the first of this month, to make the end of the month agenda.
It's always a deadline out there. Matter of fact, if you want to, I'll give you my phone number.
You haven't done liquor licenses yet.
Is there any other public comment?
Any other public comment? Close public comment, right? You're back here, closing public comment, right?
Your, your application of your table is in for your comments.
Well, we can't make a decision till... Well, the planning board, do you guys have any other questions for him?
No.
No?
I think Roger...
Yeah, we should, just really... Make a motion to table.
You got a motion to table, yeah, second.
You open your regular meeting, make your motion.
We're back to our regular meeting. Any other business before the planning board? Any other business for the planning board? No other business for the planning board.
What do you want, a motion to close meeting?
Motion to close?
Table.
Oh, the table, the... You want a, you want a motion of Jim or second?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, in a second.
Excellent. All of you favor?
Aye. No one votes?
Jimmy, you're good at it. Close the meeting.